City Council and I'll ask the clerk to call their role, please.
Mayor Stewart?
Here.
Councilmember Kobar?
Here.
Excellent. Councilmember Dibala?
Present.
Councilmember Kostic?
Here.
Councilmember Siemens? Councilmember Smith?
Here.
Councilmember Circe?
Here.
Great, and Councilmember Siemens will be here. He sends his apologies, but he's running about 20 minutes behind. Good evening, everyone. We are beginning our meeting a bit early tonight at 6:30 because we have a special guest. The county council president is with us this evening. Over to him in a moment, and then after he's done, we'll maybe take a little recess, maybe if we spend the whole hour and begin our public meeting tonight at 7:30. So one, I just want to thank county council president Gabe Adonis for coming this evening. We're so glad that you could be here in person to talk to us. Congratulations on being county council president in this year. And yeah, we'll just turn it over to you to give us some news of what's going on in the county, and then I'll ask my colleagues if they have any questions.
Great. Well, what a privilege and honor it is to be with all of you this evening, and I want to first thank you for your service. I know that you all get paid a lot of money, and you do this for the primo parking spots. But no, in all seriousness, your dedication to public service is extraordinary. Tacoma Park is such a treasure in our community, and we have some of the most engaged civic activists, not just in Montgomery County, but in our entire country, right here in Tacoma Park. And you all lead in so many different ways. And we appreciate the partnership with all of our municipalities, especially these last three years, when things have been have just disorientingly difficult for all of us. And the partnership that we have been able to forge at the state, county, and municipal levels has never been more important. And our residents don't often know or frankly care where the services come from. They just want to make sure that they are provided at a very high level, that they are treated with dignity and respect. And we all have an extraordinarily important role to play in that regard. So I bring you greetings from Rockville, where the pizza is hot and the cherry cokes are cold. And we are thrilled to be able to partner with all of you and so happy we were able to, maybe not once and for all, but to a large degree, address the municipal tax duplication issue, which we know had been on the books and a great source of frustration for many, many years, going back to when I was the director of the recreation department and some very honest and raw conversations that we had about, understandably, they're feeling that there we weren't doing enough as a community to really value the services that we provided at the municipal level. So wanted to talk to you about three things this evening, and then I'll open it up for questions, but these are three issues that are are inarguably the most hot button issues facing the council right now. The first issue is, of course, the county executive's budget, which I will give a little bit of an overview of and give you some inside baseball into where the council is at this point. The second is to talk about a little bit about Thrive 2050, because I know that has engendered a lot of discussion and a lot of interest, understandably so. And then talk a little bit about crime, because as we all go around, we hear most often from our constituents, particularly in these last few months, about deep concerns about rising crime in and around Silver Spring. So let me begin by just saying how pleased we were with the county executive's initial budget, which represented about a 7% increase over the budget the previous year. And for a little bit of context and perspective, this is my 16th budget in county government, because I was the director of the recreation department for 12 years before that. And in all but four of those years, we started the budget process with reductions. And so it's refreshing to be able to begin a process through the budget with additions. But we have to be careful, because although our revenues are undeniably higher than we thought they would be, and the most recent tax receipts that we have received are significantly higher than we would than we thought they would be. And the state has had a very healthy surplus, which, thanks to the great work of our general assembly and our Montgomery County delegation, a record level of funding has come back to the county, which has also greatly helped our overall budget picture. And frankly, thanks to our federal partners, and in particular Congressman Raskin and Senator Van Hollen, we were able to, and President Biden, we were able to really shore up a lot of support necessary for residents with rental assistance, with housing assistance, in the food security space, and to really shore up our social safety net. And at the height of the pandemic, as I know you all felt, there was a point where about 180,000 county residents had filed for unemployment all at the same time. We almost quadrupled our unemployment rate almost overnight. And while things have improved significantly, we know that people are not entirely out of the woods yet. And we have been able to prevent to date over 8,000 evictions. But we know that families are still hurting, and the rent cap will expire in May. And while it is something that we are working to make sure we ease the transition through, we know it won't be seamless, and that we will continue to need to support our families. So embedded within the county executive's budget are three categories I want to uplift. One is in the area of social safety net. The Department of Health and Human Services budget was increased by almost 16%, which is extraordinary and appropriate, given the needs that we see before us. Our nonprofit partners received an across-the-board increase of 6% for more administrative infrastructure costs, acknowledging that they've been trying to make a dollar out of 75 cents even before the pandemic, but even more so now. And so we're trying to shore up some of that support. There has been a record level of funding in the area of housing support and significant investments to the Housing Initiative Fund, which are important and going to help us out a great deal. We have also seen additional investments in the area of food security. And we have established, and I'm very particularly excited about this, a, an office at the executive branch level whose sole job will be moving forward to coordinate efforts among the community-based organizations and the municipalities who have really stepped up in the food security space during the pandemic. We want to keep that going. But we also want to make sure it's strategic and well organized, and that data is being shared, and that families don't have to explain their situation four times to four different people, but that there be more of a seamless navigator approach to the food security issue. But because of the infrastructure that we've been able to establish, I'm actually, with a high degree of confidence, can say that I think we can end childhood hunger in Montgomery County. And the investments that the county executive has made in this budget, which will have support of the council, I think will go a long way in helping to make sure we achieve that. Because right now, as we speak, there are about 40,000 kids in Montgomery County who aren't sure where their next meal is going to come from. And that's unacceptable, especially in a community where a house just sold for $14 million about two months ago. So we've got some work to do there, and there have been some significant investments. And that, the other important investment that's relevant to our municipalities is we are establishing a grant office. Prior to this pandemic and prior to this administration, you would have to, nonprofits, many of which are based here in Tacoma Park, would have to apply for the council process and then through the executive process. And you'd like to think that there was great interaction between the two. But more often than not, it wasn't as seamless as it needed to be. And so we have created a merged application process. And moving forward, we're going to have a grant office that is going to help leverage and identify federal sources, foundation sources to make a dollar out of 75 cents here in our community as well, and make the county's investments go further. It's also, we hope, going to provide greater support for nonprofits who are really struggling, as we know. You know, with with retention and recruitment of their own staff, there's a lot of burnout. And the mental health needs that we're seeing across the board are profound, and we know you're all feeling that as well. And so there are going to have to be some greater investments in that space, and the county executive did make some investments. The last couple of highlights in the budget that I want to mention are there is a record level of funding for Montgomery County Public Schools, about $117 million over maintenance of effort. But the schools have come in and requested an additional 50 million on top of what has been appropriated, which you can certainly understand, given the current environment we are in. And the council is going to do everything that it can to help support those investments, because we know our schools have really taken it on the chin, to say the least, over the last two years. And the other significant investment is the county executive announced that there we're going to try and address the recruitment and retention issues within law enforcement and our first responder, both fire and rescue, as well as Montgomery County Police. There are double-digit increases in salaries, which is appropriate, because we had fallen way behind other jurisdictions. And to put that into perspective, right now, as we speak, in the Third District Police Station, which of course aligns and partners closely with your great police department, they're down 28 officers. And 63% of Montgomery County Police Officers are eligible for retirement, as I speak to you right now. And there are about 72% of management that is eligible for retirement. This most recent cadet class we had was one of the smallest in the history of the county. We had 13, and two have already quit, and we're only four months in. So we've got a problem, and I'm hoping that this particular contract will address some of those issues, but there's more that we're going to have to do, and I'll get to that when I discuss some of the crime issues. And opportunities to address those issues collaboratively. So those are the overarching headlines with regards to the budget. I do want to note, to be a little bit of a Debbie Downer, but hopefully not too much of a Downer. We are digging into the budget, and understandably, the county executive was very aggressive in this budget, because it does represent a 7% increase, which you can understand, given the needs that are out there. But we are going to approach this cautiously, because there are signs on the horizon. You can see them in bright lights that a recession is looming. And recessions happen every 10 to 14 years. The only difference is how difficult they are. And the most recent one we had happened to be the most difficult since the Great Recession. So we want to make sure that we maintain our 10% reserves and don't write checks that frankly, we can't cash later. Because in addition to those 12 of 16 budgets where we started out with reductions, in nine of them, we had mid-year savings plans that we had to incur as well in these last 16 years, which wreaks havoc on county operations, as you can imagine. We had recreation centers that we opened and then couldn't staff. And so we want to make sure that the gorgeous facility that we'll be opening not far from here in downtown Silver Spring, the Recreation Center and Aquatic Facility, will be able to open on time, and it's in line to open within 2023. But we want to make sure that it can be staffed. So, so we are going to approach this cautiously and judiciously. But because of those revenues I mentioned earlier, we're in a significantly better position than we ever imagined we would be at the beginning of the pandemic. So that's the budget. So why don't I stop there and see if there are any questions regarding the budget, and then I'll move to thrive and then discuss some of the crime issues that we're hearing a lot about, too.
Great. Anyone have any questions? Councilwoman Dibala and then Smith?
Yeah, thank you for coming. This might be a first, and I hope it's not the last. Two questions. Is the, is the ARPA money for the county included in the budget total, or is it separate from the 7%? You alluded to a lot of the federal money, but I don't know that one in particular. And secondly, what is the, I've been asked, what is the tax rate proposal?
Sure. Well,
That the county executive has?
Absolutely. So thank you for the question, Councilmember Dibala. So the ARPA funds are separate. We are, there is one more tranche of funds, about 40 million or so that's still left that the county is going to go through over the next two months on a parallel track as we discuss the overall budget. Now, that has a very clear expiration date, and so, and there are already more requests than there are resources available within the 40 million. But we have a list that's been circulated within the council that my colleagues and I are reviewing that, you know, look at where we want to invest those $40 million. I can tell you there will be some further investments in housing. There's also, we're looking at leveraging some partnerships with the Montgomery Housing Partnership and the Montgomery County Housing Alliance. The county executive is looking at redeveloping, as an example, some of the parking garages that are in and around our urban districts, and which I think is very smart, because that's, you know, wasted space essentially. And if we can redevelop those garages, and they're built in such a way, they're so strong that you can build on top of them. So you can keep the same level of spaces, but build residential on top. And that, I think, makes a lot of sense, taking better advantage of the assets that we already have. So there are some, there's some interest in using some of the fund, the ARPA funding as seed money to get projects like that off the ground. The other big winner is going to be in the food security space to make further investments in those areas, because the need continues in that space, which is tragic.
But again, but again, in addition to the county budget.
Yes, exactly. This is in addition to. That's right. And I'm sorry, what was your second question?
About the tax rate that's proposed by the county executive.
The tax rate, he has not proposed any increases, so it remains flat.
Thank you. Councilmember Smith?
Thank you. During your presentation, you mentioned that 40,000 families are food insecure in the county. Do you have some sense of where that concentration is and what percentage is in Tacoma Park?
I'll have to get back to you with the specific breakdown, but we do have that information. So I would be, and I need to acknowledge the the Montgomery County Food Council is a heroic organization led by a remarkable woman named Heather Bruskin, who really just worked seven days a week during, throughout the pandemic, and was able to work collaboratively with the county and Man of Foods and the Capital Area Food Bank and many of the other partners to help keep things tight. So, but part of the request is that we have even better information than we already have, or secure better information than we already have, because to some degree, these incredible organizations are flying a little blind. They're not entirely sure where these families are coming from, or what their backgrounds are, and some of the other additional needs, but they're establishing relationships with them. So that gives us a fighting chance to be able to provide more holistic support. But I'd be happy to follow up with you with a better breakdown of where those 40,000 kids are coming from.
Okay, great. And inflation is killing lower income
Yes.
folks. Highest inflation we've seen in four decades. What is the county going to do to help some of those families? Are there any plans to help some of these burdens?
Yeah, that's a good question. So I'll go with sort of the, I'll start micro and then I'll go macro. So we are investing pretty significantly in rental assistance programs. And Councilmember Juwondo and I launched a pilot initiative this year called the Universal Basic Income Pilot, which follows national models, and this is not new. And we had a meeting about this just earlier today, but what it will mean is that 300 families in the pilot are going to receive $800 a month for two years. And this is, there's going to be a great deal of analysis, and we're working with Health and Human Services and the Collaboration Council to identify these families. 100 of the 300 families will be homeless families. And the other 200, it could be individuals, it could be seniors. But these are folks that have been identified by HHS that are already receiving some level of a service. But through a process and criteria that they are working through as we speak, they're going to make this available to families as early as this summer. So, so that's sort of at the micro level, where we're making investments in programs and services like that. But we are looking also, just generally speaking, at fees and sort of those things that the edges that do make an impact on folks. But we're really going to need a strong partnership with the state and the federal government to really be able to holistically provide support for families because of the inflation that we are seeing. And going back to the food security as an example, the model that we are starting to shift towards makes a lot of sense to me. And Man of Foods already has about a half a dozen markets that they have in and around Montgomery County. And it's just a much more dignified way of being able to get assistance where you can have, find food that's culturally appropriate. A lot of it comes from our agricultural reserve. And families can then choose what's appropriate for their families. And so that, that is another thing that we're going to beef up. Is that, is that a pun? Beef food? To, to make sure that, you know, there are more of those options for families.
Have you thought about extending the free bus service?
Yes, good question. Absolutely. This came up in a, in a candidate forum last night, actually. And I've worked closely with Council Vice President Glass. He's, he's been a real leader on this issue with support from the entire council. We, of course, have made children be able to ride free and youth be able to ride free, and I think that, you know, we are looking at extending that to our entire public. That would be another great way of being able to provide support, and it's something we're looking at in this budget, too. It's probably going to have to be phased in candidly, because it is about a $25 million line item. But, but it's something we're very interested in.
Is it possible to target it by zip code, or is that?
It could be. It could be. We are, we're also looking at, I should say, too, kind of taking one step backward. Director Chris Conklin, our director of the Department of Transportation within RideOn, the RideOn system is based primarily on getting people to and from work Monday through Friday. That, that's sort of the, the base construct. But it doesn't take into account going to the grocery store, taking your kid to a ballgame, or practice, or going to a doctor's appointment, or medical appointment, or going to the movies. And so they are looking long-term at making it more accessible for folks that just want to be able to access public transit for everyday activities, rather than have to take two or three different buses just to be able to go to a doctor's appointment. So that will mean adding lines, but that's something that they are looking at, too.
All right, thank you.
You. Councilwoman Circe?
Great. Thank you so much for, for coming out. And so you, you mentioned that there's a little bit of a, a little bit of a surplus in the county. And one of the things that we're tackling is the fact that the pandemic hit us harder in terms of our reserves and our ability to try to move more nimbly to address the needs of the community. And although we received ARPA funds, there is less wiggle room for us than perhaps at the county. And thank you all so much for all of the work that you've done on tax duplication. But one of the questions I have is about how municipalities that maybe don't have as much reserved wiggle room as the county may be able to partner with the county to address some of these longstanding impacts of COVID, right? So, so we are also offering things like rental assistance. We're also trying to work with our small businesses, and that's my other question around, what are you doing about businesses? But we're also trying to help our small businesses. So are there ways that as you all are tackling issues around your ARPA dollars or your budget that you can keep in mind, opening doors for municipalities to try to leverage additional resources, because we're doing the same thing? But in many cases, we're, we were hit a little harder in terms of our revenues.
Yeah.
Has that been any thought?
Not above the, what we were able to put in through the tax duplication issue, but you know, we're, we're developing sort of a running list. This is the point in the process, through the budget process, where we're meeting with key stakeholders and various sectors who are presenting very compelling arguments for making adjustments to the budget, usually up, which is quite understandable. So we can add that to the list, and we've got a great relationship with Mayor Stewart and her team. And so would love to see if there are also specific projects that we want to look, take a look at, too, whether it's in the economic development space, space or not. One thing I'd recommend, maybe at a future meeting, it might be worth bringing Ben Wu from the Montgomery County Development Economic, the Montgomery County Economic Development Corporation, they need a better name. They recently presented to the council their economic development plan, which, you know, none of it was that frankly surprising, but I thought it was effective in combining like six or seven different plans that have been developed over the last few years into one more coherent plan. Still need some work because it doesn't have baseline measures that we can track it against. And it's, it's, a lot of it's aspirational. But, but I think it's worth a conversation with Ben because one of the criticisms of the Montgomery County Economic Development Corporation, and they would push back against this, which I respect, but is that they haven't done enough for small businesses. And of course, over ninety percent of businesses in the county have fewer than fifty employees. And we talk a lot, and there's often the most attention in trying to attract Fortune five hundred companies here, or frankly, retain the ones that we already have, but not enough in the area of growing small businesses into medium-sized businesses and then, you know, hopefully future Fortune five hundred companies. And in the list of emerging companies in Fortune five hundred recently, there were eighteen businesses from Montgomery County, several of them in the green environmental space and climate action space that, you know, is something we should be doubling down on, too. But I think there's more we need to do in that space for sure, and it has to be a focus because that's how we're going to increase our tax revenues.
Definitely, and definitely look forward to that meeting and working out ways in which we could work together on that, because we have all of New Hampshire Avenue.
Yes.
We have so much of University Boulevard that's populated by small businesses that are really struggling right now.
Oh, yeah.
And so any support that we can provide them is really critical. One last question. So we talked about housing, and you kind of touched on supply in terms of that seed funds for maybe development in some of like downtown Silver Spring on top of metro, those parking garages. Has there been any other discussions around housing supply and creation? And also quality of housing? You know, the city of Tacoma Park has a very aging housing stock. And what we're running into is as we are trying to help landlords to make vast improvements to some of these very old, you know, garden-style apartments, it is substantially expensive. And so they are struggling to piece together Green Bank dollars and dollars from here and various financing in order to keep those, those rents low enough for people to afford them. Has there been any discussion around housing quality in addition to supply? But, but actually trying to help landlords with making the necessary improvements in terms of energy efficiency within the units, which can definitely impact some of our lower-income residents. Improvements just in terms of the overall quality and appearance of housing stock in the, in the county, has there been any talk about that?
Big time. So, and I really appreciate the question. You teed me up, so that I get geeked out when I talk about this. So there's a really cool organization in the county called the Green Bank. And one of the first meetings I had when I was newly elected to the council, and the, the thing that I love most about my job, you guys probably feel the same way, is you learn something new like every five minutes and sometimes every five seconds. I had heard about the Green Bank, but I wasn't really sure what it was. And this council has been very aggressive in significantly expanding the base of funding within the Green Bank. And what it is, is it's an investment portfolio that grows over time, but that the county through the Green Bank can meet property owners part of the way to create more green systems within their buildings and bring them up to lead, you know, standards that they aren't currently under. This is a big deal, particularly as it relates to public health, because as we know, aging HVAC systems are one of the contributing factors in air quality to the spread of the virus and future viruses. So not only is this a climate action issue, but it's also a public health issue and in the county's best interest to make these investments. So the Green Bank has a record level of funding, and the county executive appropriated even more to it in his recommended budget. So I would, we should follow up and maybe set up a meeting with the Green Bank to make sure that the municipal property owners are aware that this is available to them and take full advantage of it. Because it won't be a secret for very long. I, I think the more people realize what an opportunity this is, the more they're going to want to take advantage of it. So, and with regards to the quality of structures in general, I think the, the planning department, I think it's done a good job over the last eight years in particular in really raising the standards as they evaluate different projects, both in terms of their quality, but also their aesthetics. Because we do want to create this sense of place and some sense of synergy in, in our communities where there is actually, in fact, development. And, you know, it's interesting. We often talk about what's wrong in Montgomery County, and that's understandable, and, and, you know, particularly in the economic development space. But Park and Planning recently did a presentation before the council, and they put up this really interesting slide. I actually took a picture of it. And there have been more permits requested through these last two years for construction projects than significantly more previously and in line with what we're seeing in other parts of Northern Virginia. So we have nothing to be ashamed of here. We're, we're doing better than it, than we think we are. Got, still got some work to do, but, and, and last thing I'll mention, we're also looking at converting some of the commercial office space into residential space as well. There's a great example of that right downtown Silver Spring, right around the corner from Tasty Diner. There's a, there's a building there. I actually used to work in it when I worked for the Latin American Youth Center doing youth development work there. They converted them into like between four hundred and fifty and six hundred square foot condos.
Thank you so much.
Great. And I will mention that Gina Mathias, our Sustainability Manager, does connect.
Oh, good.
Maybe we could do more to advertise it, but yeah, Gina's always talking about the Green Bank.
Awesome.
Councilmember Kostic?
Well, just, first of all, just want to reiterate my thanks for coming down here. Great to see you and really useful to hear updates on what, what's going on at the county level. First of all, I really appreciate the, the emphasis you mentioned on the transit and building a ride-on. Do you happen to know if there, the pilot related to the Ride On Flex program is planned to be expanded? I, I know that's one that's sort of a, an innovative kind of on-demand transit option that it'd be really interesting to see that have an opportunity to expand. And I know here in Tacoma Park, we've thought it would be really helpful to have a route similar to that that would really help connect the whole city together.
So I, I've heard the answer is yes, but I'll have to come back to you with specifics. But it has been a success, and so it is something that we absolutely want to expand.
Great. And if I could follow up on that and just put a plug in, one of the things, and I think you'll appreciate this, having been the head of the Rec Department in Montgomery County, is connecting here, our rec programming here with what's on New Hampshire Avenue.
Nice.
There is no real direct bus line or easy access between the two points. And so that is something that I know a number of residents and we have, the council has, you know, inquired on Ride On, but as people are looking at pilot programs and reevaluating Ride On, keeping that sort of in mind would be great.
Great, great.
Sorry, Councilmember Kostic.
No, totally agree. The other thing I was wondering about was you mentioned the mental health services, and that is a really critical need that we have here in the city and throughout the county, as you said. So just wondering what sort of plans you have and what the budget looks like in terms of that.
Yeah, so we are proposing in this budget, and I really want to thank my colleague and friend, Councilmember Navarro. She, she did a great work on this. We are proposing adding a wellness center to every high school in the county. Now, it's not going to all be at once, and they're all not going to look the same. But we have actually a deeper rooted issue. If like five hundred million dollars fell from the sky tomorrow, we still wouldn't be able to hire as many behavioral health specialists as we need to be able to meet the demand that's out there right now. Because we're seeing so many cases rise to the clinical level. Everymind, which has the contract for the crisis line in the county and does a really terrific job. This, this is old information. This was as, as of a month ago, but they had already received over fifteen thousand calls to their crisis line. And that is a thirty percent rise, and there's still five months to go in the fiscal year. So it, it's overwhelming, the, the numbers that are, that are coming in. And we have been able to add text messaging capacity to the crisis line. We've also added mobile crisis units within Montgomery County Police in partnership with HHS to better respond to mental health calls. That's been an important investment. And starting this summer, the new nine eight eight call number will be available for people who are experiencing mental health crisis as opposed to the two four oh number that you got to call now. That's, you know, not easy to memorize. So those are going to help, and we've given Everymind some additional funding to be able to better prepare for that transition, because we expect the calls to go even higher once it's easier to call.
Yeah, and I, I think what you pointed on there was actually my, my third question, which was workforce development and how, how we get people into that pipeline to be able to fill those jobs. And, and also many other jobs, including a lot of the, maybe not behavioral, but OT and speech therapy and a lot of those sorts of jobs I, I know are also having a hard time filling, filling those positions. So is there a plan to help build up that, that workforce pipeline?
It's not enough, but there is, there have been some significant enhancements at the universities of Shady Grove and Montgomery College. But we have to recruit earlier at the high school level and begin to plant seeds then. We also need to look at a holistic approach to mental health challenges generally, because we need more behavioral health specialists to address issues at the clinical level. But we also have to switch the paradigm a little bit and think more about prevention and just general wellness support. And that includes things like exercise. That includes things like making sports and extracurricular activities accessible to students and breaking down the barriers for them to be able to access those opportunities. And it also looks like helping relieve some of the financial burden that our families are feeling. That's leading to a lot of the stress that we're seeing and witnessing.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Kovar, since you're online, did you have anything?
I'm gonna defer for now, since he's got part two and three still to go.
We'll let you go back to Thrive and Crime, just two very small issues.
That's right. Very easy, no problem. So Thrive 2050, of course, has engendered a lot of discussion, more constituent correspondence than we have on just about anything else in the first four years that I've been in office on the council. And we have very passionate views on this from many different angles. And so, you know, for context, the county had not updated its general plan since the early nineteen eighties. And so we were due, clearly due, to look at, you know, establishing a vision and a connecting of dots, because we keep passing these master plans, but we look at them in isolation and don't often have the broader picture. And so inadvertently and undoubtedly, sometimes within these master plans, we're missing opportunities to better connect the entire community. So it made sense to, to, to update the general plan, and I completely agree with Chairman Anderson's focus on this. It's not the planning department's fault that they initiated this process at the beginning of the pandemic, but they initiated the process at the beginning of the pandemic. And so what ended up happening was although they made a sincere and authentic attempt to reach out to different communities and stakeholders, we were in a massive state of flux. And so many, many people did not know this was happening and woke up to saying, whoa, wait a minute. And then they had heard, you know, misinformation from neighborhood civic associations and people thought that what Thrive meant was eliminating single-family zoning across the entire county, which is not true. People thought that Thrive was the ultimate document that would directly lead to this change, not fully focusing on the fact that this just sort of sets the table. There's still zoning text amendments and master plans that we have to formally go through the process, but it does provide a guide. What people don't also, haven't focused enough, in my opinion, is, is that the attainable housing component, which is very important, but it's less than five percent of the document, but it has gotten over ninety percent of the correspondence and interest. But things, there are really good things in Thrive with regards to more open space, recommendations for more creating a sense of place, which is so important for all of us. The part that I love is the recreation and leisure, the focus on parks, the focus on our tree canopies. And they intentionally sprinkled climate action and economic development throughout the entire document as opposed to having individual chapters dedicated exclusively to those important issues. But because they're sprinkled throughout a two hundred-plus-page document, there's a perception that they're not there at all, or that they're watered down, or they're, they're not receiving the attention they deserve. But the, what concerned me the most is the, we've received very passionate advocacy saying this is a, this is a generational opportunity for us to establish a greater supply of housing options closer to transit using smart growth principles and pushing back against the McMansion effort and what we're seeing across communities where single-family homes are being torn down and very large structures are being put in their place. And so there's concern about that. And there was a feeling that Thrive could help set the table for, instead of a McMansion, you know, maybe a duplex, maybe a tri, maybe a quad would make more sense. But there were some folks in the community that said, okay, but if you do that by rights and you don't give me an opportunity to have any input into that, that's not fair either. So, but passionate advocates saying this is our chance to diversify our housing stock. And then equally passionate advocates that are telling us if you do this, you are going to accelerate gentrification in Montgomery County and push me out of my neighborhood and prevent my kids from being able to afford to live here. Both things can't be right. And so in this case, I think slow and steady is going to win the race. And so I requested with the full support of my colleagues, a racial equity analysis, because I thought it was important for us to be able to get the right information. Because this is a thirty-year document that we've got to get right, and it's not going to satisfy everyone, but at the moment, it doesn't satisfy enough people. And as we dug into the process, although again, there were legitimate and authentic attempts, both by the planning board and the council to some degree, not enough voices were heard in this process. And so we are hiring right now, as we speak, a consultant working with our Office of Legislative Oversight and the incredible Dr. Elaine Bonner Tompkins, who manages our racial equity analysis process. She is going to work directly with this consultant to do two things, more than two, but these are the top two. They are going to more directly reach out into communities that feel they haven't been heard or haven't been engaged. They're going to partner with community-based organizations, faith-based organizations. They're not going to start from scratch. They're going to take advantage of existing community infrastructure and community connections. But the second thing that it's going to do is conduct an analysis, because other jurisdictions have done this. Minneapolis is an example. Did it work? And, and how did it go? There are case studies that, that I think we can look at and follow. And, and I think for better or worse, and I do have a tremendous amount of respect for our planning board, there's a feeling by some, not all, but by some, that, that that they're too close to this issue at this point. And that, that we would benefit from taking one step back from somebody who may not be as close to it and evaluate holistically and then report back to us. That's not all going to happen by July first. It's just not. And so, but it will happen by the late summer, early fall. And we'll be in a much better position then to take it up much more informed. And I am confident that this council is going to pass Thrive. But what's in it and how it works is yet to be determined. And the last thing I'll say before opening up for questions or thoughts is I do think there need to be some more intentional chapters. And one of the areas that I personally have an issue with that I think Thrive needs to do a better job of addressing is infrastructure. We have huge flooding issues that have really grown in the last eight years across the community. I live in Kensington. And it's, it's happening with such frequency. And there's currently an analysis being done at the state level right now. People are going to be shocked when they pay their home insurance premiums two years from now, because there's going to be a significant percentage of Montgomery County residents that are going to have to pay flood insurance that don't currently have to because of where we're going here. And this is a complex issue. The county cannot fix this on its own. We need the states and the, the utilities to work with us. So that's more or less where we are with Thrive, and again, happy to answer any questions you guys have.
Why don't we try and do downtown Silver Spring crime very quickly?
Yeah, sounds good.
Before that, because we'll have to start our public meeting at seven thirty.
Yeah, yeah, it sounds good. You guys get me going. I could be here all night. If you don't want me here all night. Just very quickly on crime. We're seeing it, we're feeling it. It is real, and it has increased. The, the prevalence of guns has become a huge, huge, huge issue, ghost guns being one of them. I co-led legislation or led legislation two years ago to ban the sale of ghost guns here in Montgomery County through a zone text amendment. The president talked about this from the Rose Garden. The president talked about this from the Rose Garden just a couple of days ago. And the state, thank goodness, passed a law that bans ghost guns effectively across the state. But you can still buy them online, you can still go across the river and buy them in Virginia. And we, we have to make sure that, that this is an area of focus moving forward. And we have to make sure that we address the underlying issues that are leasing, leading to the rise in crime. The, the financial inequities, the, the financial burdens that families are facing. And frankly, we need to go back to where we were prior to the pandemic with youth engagement. My coach of the county execs, former county executives, Positive Youth Development Initiative. We partnered closely with the city's Department of Recreation on that effort. Because we need to triple down. I've seen kids who are in the most dire of circumstances, but with a caring adult who is committed to supporting and mentoring them. You can see some really remarkable transformations and change and support. So we have to redouble those efforts. But I alluded to this earlier, we do have to address recruitment and retention issues within law enforcement. And while we have been aggressive, as we should be, in ensuring accountability and transparency. And making sure that we are staying ahead of the curve and addressing the generational wrongs within our criminal justice system. We have to also acknowledge, these are tough jobs and we ask a lot of our officers too much. And we have to make sure that the vast majority of our officers, who I believe are there for the right reasons and doing the right thing. Are supported and the ones that are not are transitioned out. But I have found that it's officers themselves, at least here in Montgomery County, who are often the hardest on officers who are not doing the right thing. And so we have to make sure that construct is elevated and we support these officers. And this next contract, I think is going to go a long way in doing that, but we got to do more. And we introduced legislation to provide a tax, a homeowner's tax credit for first responders. Because this is a challenge within fire and rescue as well. So, but, and we are looking at, I know this is controversial, but I'm just going to say it. We wanted a vibrant nightlife in downtown Silver Spring. We, we need a vibrant life, nightlife in Silver Spring. But if our third district is down 28 officers as it is now. And we have, you know, places of business that by and large do the right thing. But that stay open almost 24/7. Because they're not, they fall into this gray area of regulation, and I'm talking about hookah, hookah bars and lounges. So what we're, what we've heard is that many people will go to nightclubs. And then 2:30, 3 o'clock in the morning, that's where they're going to go next, from 3 to 5 to 6 o'clock in the morning. And if you look at the trajectory of gun violence that we've seen, many of the incidences are happening between 2 and 4 o'clock in the morning. And those are beats that are hard to fill within the police department in the third district. And they're, they're down so many officers that it's even more difficult. So, and this is a regional issue, it's not just Montgomery County. But we are looking at legislation to put some guardrails in and, and address the, the very real issue. But do it in a way that's appropriate and, you know, we'll go through the legislative process. And I know Councilmember Juwondo has done a great job in proactively reaching out to some of the owners of these establishments, and they want to do the right thing. But, but they need help.
I'm going to kick us off with the first question. On the tax credit that you talked about for first responders. Has there been thought, because Tacoma Park, Gaithersburg and Rockville, we have our own police departments? Would that extend to police officers who are in our departments as well?
Not at the moment, but, but I think it should.
Yeah.
And actually, the Fraternal Order of Police, our understanding is, and Fire and Rescue, the, the union that represents Fire and Rescue. Recently reached a deal with the county executive so that it doesn't need legislation. They've been able to enact this on their own within their contract. But I do think it's something that should be extended to the municipalities. We've extended it to our volunteer firefighter department. So I think it would make sense to extend it to you guys too, because you're having the same challenges.
Great. Councilmember Kovar, I'll go to you since you passed the last time.
Thank you, and, and thank you very much, President Alvaroz, for, for appearing before us, I really appreciate it. And I'll just make two more, more comments than, than questions. And if you can think about them and, and respond in the future, that'd be okay. Both relating to housing, you mentioned in the context of the budget and the ARBA discussion, looking more at partnerships with, with nonprofits. And one of the things that we found, and I talk about it a lot, I don't know how many of my colleagues agree with it. But one of the things we've found is, we've done these very small affordable housing projects, which I think have been really helpful. But it's months of work for a, a group of lawyers and staff and so on. For, you know, an important but modest payoff in terms of preserving a few units or, you know, a small number of condos or something of that nature for affordable housing. And so I really think to scale it up, there needs to be kind of a bigger partnership with, with outside organizations. And in some ways, that's beyond our, the scope of what we can do. And so to the extent that the county could help facilitate, whether it is through the budget or other ways. Help municipalities that are trying to do the right thing, like us on affordable housing, but be able to do larger, more scaled up partnerships. I think that would be really great. And then the other thing I'll mention in the context of thrive, I think we do have to be open to seeing some changes to single family neighborhoods. But I think where the challenge has come up is between density and affordability. And it feels like a lot of people and some of the discussion around thrive have focused on the notion that density will always be good. And density can be very good, but in many cases, and I think this is where the gentrification thing comes in. In many cases, density alone isn't going to produce affordable units. And from what I've seen, you rarely if ever get any type of affordable units without the government, one way or another subsidizing. And so to me, what there could be more of in thrive, to the extent that I've had a chance to go through it, is that focus on the county somehow, and I'm talking about county money, so it's easy for me to say the county should spend more money. But, but more money to be spent to really subsidize affordability so that that can maybe blunt some of the concerns about gentrification. So those are just two points to think about, and you can respond now or subsequently, depending on the time that you have.
Well, I appreciate the question, you're right. And, you know, any of these projects individually on their own are not going to, let me take a picture here. Any of these projects individually on their own are not going to, to do it. But collectively and strategically, I think they can make a really big difference. And the county exec has made some pretty significant investments in the Housing Initiative Fund. And he is working closely with some of these nonprofit organizations on some of these bigger projects. That, that I think will have a greater impact. And, you know, we are looking at going up, building higher. And that, that is another practical reality of urban communities and neighborhoods. I mean, I look at the Bethesda skyline, I grew up in Bethesda. And it just blows me away every day as I drive by and downtown Silver Spring as well. You just look at it and you're like, oh my gosh, these are, these are robust cities. And I remember when all there was, was hot shops and shaky pizza. So there is, there has been some, some change, but there's clearly going to have to be more of it.
Great. Well, I think on that, we'll conclude this evening. Thank you so much for coming. We're going to just take a five minute break and we'll be back for our regular meeting and kick off with our public hearing on the city manager's recommended budget. So thank you, everyone, we'll be back in five. Everyone, we are back. We started our meeting at 6:30 this evening with a presentation and discussion with the county council president, Gabe Alvaroz. And we thank him very much for attending our council meeting this evening. If you missed the discussion, you can go back and watch it after tonight's meeting. Next, now we will move to our, do we have Suhani to do our legislative update? Is she with us or I can?
Hi, I'm here.
Okay.
Able to hear and see me?
Yes, we can hear you. I think there's something wrong with our monitors, but I think you can go.
Perfect. Well, hello everyone, I hope everyone's doing good. The, the kind of main update is that the past, this past Monday was signing die, which signifies the end of the 2022 session. There were some floor votes going up until just before midnight, so it was a very action packed day. But all for a good reason, a lot of really, you know, significant and good bills have, have moved this session. So it was, it was fairly successful in that sense. Kind of just a general update that, you know, this session, we saw an unprecedented budget surplus. You know, and this is kind of important just because it's a post pandemic year, but also an election year. Both the government and the legislators kind of made sure to provide money back to certain taxpayers, certain tax breaks went through. But also just programs and capital projects around the states as well should be receiving a good amount of funding. So I'm sure a lot of folks have just, you know, seen, seen in the news, kind of the, the big bills and highlights that everyone's kind of chatting about. In the environmental front, Climate Solutions Now, which was Senator Pinsky's bill, passed a little bit of ti, a, a while ago. And the governor let it go into law without signing it. And it's a, it's a fairly comprehensive bill, it's, it's significant. It's one of kind of the more progressive climate change bills in, in the country, so that's really good news. In addition to that, Paid Family Leave was also passed. The, the ghost gun bill was passed, which was kind of the major gun bill this discussion. Juvenile justice reform has gone through and cannabis is also going to be on the ballot in November. A bill was passed to put that on the ballot for voters to decide to, whether, whether to legalize it or not. The city of Tacoma Park weighed in on about two, two dozen bills. And some significant ones were Vision Zero, which is a pedestrian safety bill that has passed. Building energy standards, which were incorporated into Climate Solutions Now, that's there. There's a number of housing bills that are meant to support tenants and landlords. Medic, and this is something that's just kind of in general, just kind of related to the public health for Tacoma Park. Medicaid coverage for pregnant immigrants has passed. And also a dental coverage bill for Medicaid enrollees has, has passed as well. And the kind of big transportation bill was a transit equity bill that, that also went through, which is really great news. And in addition to that, just to kind of provide an update, this isn't something that like, you know, the city weighed in or anything, but this is just kind of general. Is we were looking at the, both the congressional legislative maps. I think most recently, the, the Court of Appeals has, I think, accepted the maps, if I'm not mistaken. And the elections are set to be July 19th. If, and I think that's the, the latest that we have heard on, on the map. So those are, are the updates from, from the session, a lot of good stuff has happened. And if there's any questions, I'm more than happy to answer them.
Great, thank you, Suhani. I'm not seeing anyone with their hands raised, and I just want to say thank you so much for your work this session and Ann Seacott's work. There was a great deal that the city weighed in on, oh, there's Ann, and now we see you, thank you. I just want to say thank you to both of you for representing the city in Annapolis and all of your work. It is a very packed 90 days and with a lot of information needing to be shared back and forth. I also want to thank my colleagues, Councilmember Kovar and Councilwoman Dibala. Who, with myself, served as a subcommittee of the council so that we could respond quickly to each of these bills and things. So thank you so much for. So thank you so much for all your work this session and we will have you, after you rest a bit, come back and after we do our budget to do a more in-depth look at what took place this session and get us ready for next year and we'll be to the Maryland municipality for our legislative action requests. So thank you both and we'll see you soon.
Perfect. Thank you all. Have a good night.
Thank you. Now we will move to our public hearing on the city manager's recommended FY 2023 budget. We were, had the presentation last week from the city manager on this. It is on the city website. I do not believe we have anyone signed up in the auditorium for public comments during the public hearing. And we have two people who signed up online for the public hearing. Do we have Mr. Yubner or Ms. Miller? Okay. Well, I'm going to go through our upcoming agenda while we wait then. Looking at upcoming city council meetings, we begin this Monday night, April 18th, with our Monday night meetings on budget work sessions. The first one is our operating and community service budgets. That begins at 7:30 on Wednesday, April 20th. We will have a reception welcoming our city manager finally at 6:45 in the atrium lobby. We had this scheduled back in September. But because of COVID and the fact that we had not reconvened in person until just a month ago, we had to reschedule. So we're finally doing that on Wednesday, April 20th. On April 20th, during our regular meeting, we will also welcome and introduce Montgomery College Scholarship recipients. And during our regular meeting, we will have a voting items on resolution endorsing the community development block grants projects, first reading ordinance amending our code regarding police employees retirement plan to change the application process for deferred to retirement option program. And we'll have the first reading ordinance amending chapter 1104 to regulate signs in public areas. And I believe that will, should be up on the website. If it's not up yet, it should be up. It is up. Okay. If people want to take a look at that. Our work session next week is an update from Aventis Healthcare on the proposed health services in Tacoma Park. An updated proposal from them should be posted before that meeting. And then we will have a work session on our FY 2022 budget amendment number four. And then on Monday, April 25th, we have our, again, budget work sessions, this time on capital projects and a presentation on the police canine units. Then our regular meeting on Wednesday, April 27th, we have our Bike to Work Day proclamation, public hearing on the tax rate and the budget. And our regular meeting, we have voting items on the first reading ordinance of approving the FY 2022 budget amendment number four. Second reading ordinance on regarding signs in public areas. And the second reading ordinance amending the code regarding public employees retirement plan. Then on Monday, May 2nd is budget reconciliation. And then on Wednesday, May 4th, we have the second reading ordinance approving FY 2022 budget amendment number four. And then on Wednesday, Wednesday, May 4th, nothing scheduled yet unless we have to do some, hopefully we'll be good with the budget because then on May 11th and May 18th, we vote on the budget. And that takes us to the end of May. All right. Now we'll go back to our public hearing and I believe we have Ms. Miller. There you are.
Good evening, Sue Miller, Ward three. This is an exceedingly bad time to raise taxes. And it is an exceedingly bad time to increase staffing, compensation, or programming. At minimum, residents expect the council to insist on the necessary cuts to the staff's proposal rather than increase taxes to get the proposed budget in balance. And we expect the tax rate to be reduced to the constant yield rate. But more deeply, it is past time to begin to address our outsized staff and salaries, our constant use of consultants, and our inability to bring in projects on budget. Here is some context for this budget. One, people are still recovering economically from a pandemic that is ongoing, not over. Two, we are grateful that you have negotiated more income from the county to reduce tax duplication. But that does not mean it should be spent on new staff and programs. Three, housing prices have skyrocketed. Our assessments have skyrocketed. And it doesn't appear that this is being taken into account. Four, many residents are angry about escalating costs for the library and police station expansion and other projects not completed on budget. Five, many residents are unhappy about how much is spent on unnecessary outside contractors. A prime recent example was hiring consultants to run the public safety task force. They simply got in the way of resident experts and muffled their input. Another example was hiring consultant for redistricting when a simple computer algorithm provided the most compact map, the one you could have and should have chosen according to our charter and code. And six, many residents are unhappy with the size and expense of our staff, which is completely out of line for a city our size. In short, it is morally, economically, and politically essential to get this budget back under control. And the time to start doing that is tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. Next, we have Mr. Yubner.
I received a message from Mr. Hugner that he will send his comments in writing for this evening.
I'm right here. I did that as a courtesy. Excuse me.
Sorry.
As a courtesy, so they would have him be able to read them. I thought that was, would be helpful. I don't know.
Hey, with public comments.
Are we, am I on?
You are on. Yes, everyone can hear you. Go ahead.
I, I did send them in writing and so Jesse knows. So, good evening. I'm Paul Hugner in Ward three. And I was disappointed that the city manager was unable to balance the budget. I suggest that you return this massive tax increase back to the city manager and direct him to produce the 9% cut in expenditures. He asserts we need to balance the budget. His example on page 32 of increased property assessments assumes 3.9%. Yet the national average increase in property assessments is 22.67%. My assessment rose 23.5% and the average horizon assessments for my nearest 10 neighbors is 24.94%. And assessments have been skyrocketing for years in Tacoma Park and so too of city taxes. From 2010 to 2018, the cumulative tax increase was 24.3%, three times inflation, which was 8.89% over the same period. In the last three years, the tax rate was constant at 53.97 per hundred, yet property tax revenue increased on an annual basis at nearly $500,000 per year. In spite of these increases, the city revenue, in city revenue, we are faced with a deficit of nearly $7 million. The city manager says that 65 to 80% of general fund expenditures are for personnel and 22% for capital projects. I would suggest that personnel costs and capital project expenditures account for an unacceptable portion of the city budget and need to be reduced. For instance, the police atrium renovation is already three years beyond its projected date of completion. And the library renovation is many years overdue and still without a final budget. Both of these projects would still be burdening city coffers were it not for the federal government in the form of ARPA funding. These two projects were bailed out to the tune of nearly $6 million. Clearly, the problem is not revenue, since it has steadily increased every year of this council. It is expenditures which have risen every year as a result of more and more personnel being added to city staff. The city has added 13.63 positions in the last five years alone. Today, inflation exceeds 8.5% and mortgage rates have risen 2% just this week. I asked the council to consider the cost of housing, food, fuel, and note that even if the city held a tax increase at a constant yield rate, most property taxes, certainly mine and my neighbors, would still rise. Personally, if the city raises a property tax to the proposed 56.97 cents, my property taxes would rise over $1,500 this year. As a 30-year resident, I ask for your help in demanding city staff be required to do their job and bring forward a balanced plan, not simply another tax increase on the backs of me and my fellow residents. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Yubner. I believe that concludes our public hearing this evening on the city manager's recommended FY 2023 budget. Now we will move to any general public comments. First, we will begin with public comments here in the auditorium. Do we have any general public comments this evening?
Pick their representatives rather than representatives picking their voters. I hope that in the review of redistricting, the council will consider reducing or eliminating council involvement in the process. That's good for the public. It reduces the possibility of self-interested redistricting. And it's good for the council. It reduces the possibility of the appearance of self-interest. There are plenty of options. You could make all council seats at large. No districts means no redistricting. You could adopt the Montgomery County Board of Education model where members must live in their districts. But everyone in the county votes on all seats. The council would no longer be picking their voters. Everyone would be voting for them. You could be innovative and adopt reciprocal redistricting. For example, the Hyattsville City Council would redistrict Tacoma Park, while the Tacoma Park City Council would redistrict Hyattsville. You could be more innovative and adopt pooled redistricting involving three or more cities. This would eliminate the possibility of collusion between two city councils. You could require the council to choose without modification from options presented to it. The option could, options could be prepared by consultants, the board of elections, or as in 2012, a task force. Eliminating modifications would help avoid the hard feelings of the last round of redistricting. Of course, the council would use ranked choice voting in selecting among the options. You could adopt redistricting by referendum, leaving it up to voters to choose among options. Again, ranked choice voting would be used. In the interest of equity, you could use jury redistricting. Rather than options being prepared by a self-selected task force or board, there'd be redistricting duty akin to jury duty, with folks receiving duty notices and going through a selection process with the council to determine who would serve. Or you could adopt automated redistricting. It would have worked tolerably well this year. And when it is used, a computer rather than people gets the blame for any problems. If the council is open to change, I hope you'll ask the city's board of elections for advice on how to move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments this evening? Let's see, I don't believe we had anyone sign up online. Is that correct? All right, then we will move on to council comments. Any council comments this evening? Seeing no council, Councilwoman Kostic, sorry.
Thank you very much. And thank you to the public commenters. Ward three was well represented in our budget comments. So appreciate that. And I'll, I'll follow up with each of you. And Mr. Hugner, I think I got a letter of yours that was delivered to my house. So I will bring that over as well. And I appreciate the comments from Mr. Olson about reviewing our redistricting process. And I do think it would be really helpful if the board of elections could take a look and provide us with, with their thoughts on, on things as we kind of do this while it's still fresh in our minds. Just two quick announcements. One is the long awaited stop sign at Lincoln and Carroll is almost here or maybe here as we speak. It was covered with Yeah, it was covered when I, when I came, but I think those covers are coming off. So please do stop when you're on Carroll and at that stop sign. And we're hopeful that it will stay here for the long term. But at the moment, it is just meant to be a temporary thing, but we're hopeful it will work out well and it will reduce crashes there and improve safety significantly. I know myself walking here tonight, I, I thought to myself, this is probably the last time I have to, for, for my life, as much as I do when I cross that street, walking across it, because it will be safer as a pedestrian as well. And then I just also wanted to note that I had an opportunity through my role, chairing the NLC Human Development Committee. I serve on the MML board through that role. And I had an opportunity this afternoon to take part in some of their strategic planning processes. So it was really interesting to kind of delve into some of the initial stages of, of that. And I look forward to hearing more from them on that and them sharing out sort of what the next steps will be. And that's all for me right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Dibala.
Yeah. A couple of things. I've already gotten thank yous about the stop sign and I, I think the lion's share of credit, more than the lion's share. The, the lion's pride share goes to Councilwoman Kostic. So thank you very much for that. I'm going to have a couple of budget drop-in sessions for Ward two residents. Since Ward two was not as well represented tonight, they'll be, just think Tuesdays and I'll send it out rather than bore everybody with the details now, but lunchtime and, and evening time sessions for drop-in, plus any, you know, anytime you want to get ahold of me. Two things for the rest of the council. So we have started working again on property tax credits options. And we come back with you on that in a week or so. And the subgroup on committees is scheduled to meet tomorrow. And that's it for me. Thank you.
Councilmember Smith?
Thank you for, I want to thank everyone that came out to online and Arthur David Olson for your comments. Just want people to know that there will be a Ward five Zoom meeting to discuss the budget. I will put the details on the list. So thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Kovar.
Thank you, Mayor. Sorry, it took me a minute there. Thanks also, I'll say as well to those who spoke this evening. And I also have a couple of events coming up as, as several of my colleagues mentioned. Two events on Tuesday, the 19th, one in the evening and one during the day for people to comment on the budget. So I'll send that information out separately in the usual ways. Two other things, and maybe the staff could check on these points and then respond subsequently. I did share with staff and also with some people in the county government, the serious concern that was brought to my attention about the condition of some of the trees on the slope that leads up from Ed Wilhelm Field up to the children's play area. And if you look at it, so many of the roots are exposed there. It's hard to imagine that the trees will be able to stay too much longer. And there could be safety concerns as well if they were to fall. And I, I think it's a county responsibility. I know we sometimes have some involvement in the conditions at Ed Wilhelm there, although I think the county would be the ones who would have to do something with this. But I did share the photos that were the Ward one residents shared with me of the condition of the trees there. And I think it really would be helpful if we could try to get the county to really take some action there. Then the other thing I wanted to ask about, and I think this is also ultimately a county function, but it's something that a lot of residents have been asking me about, and that's whether there are steps that we could take or that the county could take regarding the deer population. And I know it's something that's not limited to this area. I, I read an article recently about how they're trying to sterilize deer on Staten Island, where it's a big issue as well. But I think people feel like they don't dislike deer per se, but that the population is reaching a point where it really does seem excessive for the area. And if there are steps that can be taken to humanly address it, I think a lot of people who have contacted me would be interested in that. So maybe the staff could get in touch with their county counterparts to look into potential options there. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Kovar. Not seeing any other comments. I will turn it over to the city manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Members of council have several updates this evening. First update, we have a presentation of the Human Health First update, we have a presentation of the human health effects on lawn pesticides that's coming up this next week. It's going to be held here in the auditorium, Tuesday, April nineteenth at seven PM. And we, we have the presentation by Vice President for Science Investigations to talk about the contaminants and risk assessment for a variety of chemical substances that you can use, which goes, goes in hand in hand with the Safe Grow Act that you all in past councils have adopted back in two thousand fourteen. And we have all that information on the website and through our social media posted currently. The second item of the night is, we did have a small cell facility installation at Philadelphia Avenue. The update there, the city has confirmed that this installation is for a small cell facility. It is not operational at this time. The location is within Maryland State Highway right away, based on the state maps. The facility is owned by Verizon Wireless, and the company overseeing installation is Network Building Consulting, NBNC. We have notified the facility that it failed to follow Montgomery County requirements. The applicant did not submit an application for the Tower Commission and did not apply for permits through the Department of Permitting Services. We have requested a meeting with NBNC, but we have not heard anything currently. The city also has asked Montgomery County DPS if they intend to enforce the county requirements and was still awaiting a response from them. And State Highway Administration did not issue a permit for this application. S H A notified the city on July second, twenty twenty one, of the receipt of the application prior to issuing the permit. The city did not comment, assuming that the application would come back for more review through the Tower Commission process where we would have weighed in. Councilmember Kostic has already shared about Carol Ave and Lincoln that will be unveiling at nine PM, so very shortly for the four-way stop there. Next couple is more operational. COVID nineteen cases are up forty-three percent in Maryland through the BA two sub-variant of Omicron, which is more infectious. Just want to share with the community and council that the city is continuing to monitor the case levels, CDC guidance that we receive, and continue to encourage unvaccinated residents to get vaccinated. We continue, a few weeks ago, or last month rather, council acts me to go back and look at with staff our policies. We have reviewed our city telework policy and our COVID nineteen related policies and believe they are sufficient and do not require any changes at this time. As of this year, we changed our telework policy from two days to three days, which is a little bit different than what some of our counterparts in, in the region are doing. As far as our COVID nineteen protocols and vaccine mandates, they'll stay in, in force, but changes could happen in the near future as we continue to manage this pandemic. There have been questions concerning our mask mandate. Currently, there is no mandate in place, but we're continually to strongly encourage mask-wearing indoors. The city's position may change in the near future depending on the various variants there are now out and about, and, and the guidance that we receive from our healthcare professionals at the state level, county level, and national. The city workforce is ninety-six percent vaccinated with at least two shots. The library department is still distributing rapid test kits and KN ninety-five masks still available. To date, we provided fifty-one hundred masks and five thousand fifty rapid test kits through this past week. The recreation center is still hosting the Maryland Department of Health for COVID nineteen testing through the end of April. Every Wednesday from nine AM to six PM at the recreation center. Rain or shine, this Friday and Saturday, April fifteenth and sixteenth, will host our Easter extravaganza scavenger hunt. So very excited that we're able to do that now, trying to get back to pre-COVID times. Great time for families to come out for that. Couple other items we had, just want to just share our TKPK five K race. It's going to be virtual, and it's going to run from May fifteenth and May to May thirty-first, and you can go ahead and register now. And then information is, is on our website. Just a reminder, we have Bike to Work Day that's, that's coming up next month. Registration is open, and you can go to biketoworkmetroDC.org to register. Sign up early and, and you'll be able to get a T-shirt. The couple other items, rent stabilization allowance in the city of Tacoma Park is set for seven point three percent effective July first through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, based off of the CPI. Landlords are required to comply with the rent stabilization law and cannot increase rents higher than this allowance. Staff will have more information in the newsletter as well as the Tacoma Park Insider. The Housing Division will hold a town hall in mid-May for landlords and tenants. The time and date will be in the newsletter and Insider. The last item I share, Mayor and Council, is with the conflict in Ukraine, the city's IT department continues to closely monitor our security controls for cybersecurity. Was very paramount important to our operations. We've had additional security updates that's been applied to our technology infrastructures. And our technology team and director continues to join the weekly and bi-weekly meetings because we're part of a multi-governmental security organization group that meets weekly, bi-weekly, which is the MCAC, Maryland Coordination Analysis Center, the MS ISAC, the Multi-State Information Sharing Analysis Center, and CISA, Cybersecurity and Infrastructure Security Agency. So we're making the right investments and putting the resources where we need to go, so we will not have too many issues heckling what, moving forward. But just wanted to share a few kind of the, the great work that staff has been doing with that. Madam Mayor, I'll turn it back over to you.
Mr. Fox, thank you for that update. Glad to see that we are trying to stay ahead of all the hacking that's coming out of Russia and Eastern Europe. One thing you mentioned about the CPI increase in our rents for those properties that are under rent stabilization for folks that are in the city that might have problems making those payments, are they eligible for any type of rent subsidies that we may have or the county may have because of this huge increase directed by inflation?
Thank you for that question, Councilmember Smith, and, and I, I will, I need to circle back with Director Cross and his team, particularly the Housing Division, to, to make sure that we have the answer is yes. And I'll, I'll get that answer to you shortly.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. All right, now we'll move on to our, thank you for that report, our work session tonight. Our first work session is an amendment to the police employee's retirement plan, and I'll turn it over to our city manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This evening we have Director Smith, our HR Director. She's here to answer any questions you may have. This item is trying to help. It was individuals that we had inside the organization that wasn't able to take advantage of the drop program because it, it took the city a long time to be able to bring a program online. With that, I'll turn it over to Director Smith. She could take from there.
So just a little background to remind everybody where we're at with the program is specifically. So as you know, the, the city has an internal police pension, or pension program for our police, sworn police officers. During the last full round of negotiations, and we agreed to develop a drop program for them. Drop programs basically allow officers to set its retirement date. Notify us of that date, continue working for three years after that. And then at that time, exit the drop and receive the contributions that they made within that three-year timeframe in addition to their monthly retirement, normal retirement payment. So that was agreed to and developed. We brought that to council about this time last year and was approved. And then, as City Manager Fox said, it took us some time to develop the forms, get it rolled out to employees, so we didn't actually roll it out until January of this year. During that time, and I will say, say there's language in the policy and the ordinance and the program that says they can only enter the drop program in a forward and, at, at a time in the future. So as City Manager Fox said, there's, I believe, three officers that were eligible at the time the drop program was approved that would like to enter it at that time, or sometime between when it was approved and, and now. And the language of the ordinance and the policy does not specifically allow us to make those exceptions, which is why we're bringing the ordinance to you now. So the only language in that, that would change is the ordinance is an allowance for those officers that were eligible at the time that the drop program was approved to be able to enter it at that time or sometime between then and now. So it's only three officers that it would affect, I believe, would not affect anything in the future. This just I guess, gives some acknowledgement to the fact that it took the city a long time to roll it out and that there was, they shouldn't be penalized basically for that delay. So before you, is that ordinance allowing them to enter the drop program if they apply for it? And I ask that you approve that. I'm happy to answer any questions about the program or its implications.
Thank you, Director Smith. Any questions tonight regarding the drop program? Councilwoman DiBala?
Yeah, so in essence, these three people can, can apply retroactively?
Correct.
And then when they are approved, is that also then retroactive?
Correct. Yeah, so for instance, they would say, um, they want to, they want to enter as of April first of last year for that three-year period. So just one year would have passed already when normally it would be the full three years that they're actually in the program into the future. So this would allow them to
Count from last day.
Count, yeah, count the time that's already passed as part of that.
Councilwoman Circe?
So I guess I'm still a little confused by the proposed language. Where we said, we said that who completed twenty-five years of eligibility based on or before the drop effective date may elect within sixty days after the effective date of this ordinance. So so, so I'm confused. So was the original ordinance, did we not include an effective date? And so I guess I'm underst, I'm, I'm not clear on why we need this corrective correction if the original ordinance established the effective date, or do we not do that? So if the original ordinance established the effective date of the date of that ordinance?
So I think that's speaking, sorry, I didn't mean. I think, I think that effective date is referring to the date that, that employee enters the drop. The, the effective date of their drop entry, not the effective date of the overall drop program.
Okay, okay. So again, I guess I'm still confused because if the effective date of the drop program was a date of the original ordinance, whether we have administrative delays or, or not, the effective date of the original ordinance is of the program is the effective date of the program, and so they should be able to backdate until the original, the effective date of the ordinance.
That's what we're attempting to, that's what we're attempting to, to make happen with this ordinance. I believe that the original language, the original, the language of the original ordinance does not allow that because it only allows for future entries into the program. And since we did, which because we didn't have the forms and the possibility available to them to do that, we, we had some people saying, I want to enter, and we kept saying, we're not ready for you to enter yet administratively. Even though the drop program had been approved.
Administratively, we weren't ready for them. At the date of the original ordinance.
Correct.
But because we did not have the forms ready, we did not tell them that it was in effect. We administratively said the program was in effect at the time in which we had the forms ready.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, we didn't, yes, we did not allow them to enter because administratively we were not ready.
Okay, yes, so did our attorney look at this?
This?
Yeah.
Yes.
He came up with this? Okay. Yeah, because I think where, where I'm kind of confused is that if the ordinance was the, in fact, the effective date, then it's the effective date. I'm confused as to why we need to go back, change the ordinance to basically say that you can apply as per the original ordinance's effective date because we administratively made a decision. I guess that's where I'm still confused because I, I thought when we passed the original ordinance, we passed the ordinance establishing the effective date of the program.
And I, and I believe, I believe that's correct. Again, I think it's just a, it's, it's, the question is because they weren't allowed to enter it, even though the, even though the drop program was active, they weren't actually able to get into it.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Mayor.
Yeah, no, I'm.
Thank you, Mayor.
I guess, as my colleagues have said, this is confusing. So the council approved this, and it was ready for implementation. But I guess the administration did not implement it at that time.
Correct.
And then, and told officers that they couldn't sign up because of, you weren't ready for it.
Correct.
And I'm wondering, what is, what was the whole of, why, why did this go on for so long without it, without being ready for it?
Yeah, it was, it was several factors. One large one was my workload, followed by coordination with two attorneys. The Pension Board having to schedule or coordinate about eight schedules for the meetings to get the meeting set up for implementation. So it was a snowball effect, a number of factors that it just took us a number of months, over six months to get it where they could actually apply.
Okay, but during that time, you were saying that it wasn't available to apply.
Correct.
And so has that delay adversely affected any of the potential applicants?
So it has, it has not let them enter the drop when they wanted to. So, so it has set back their retirement technically, because if they wanted to start, if they wanted to, if they want to enter the drop, and we only have it set up to be a three-year drop, they don't get to pick one or two or five years, we've said, because the way the program is written, it's only three years that they can pick. They wanted to enter it a year ago, but up until January, February, we didn't let them. So eight or nine months of them not being able to retire when they've wanted to is how they're adversely affected.
I seem to recall an email from a departed officer who complained about this. And does this affect his case in any way?
No, because it, it would if he were still employed with us, but he separated. He, he retired under normal retirement instead of choosing to stay and enter the drop.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry, Madam Mayor, I, I also just want to state, just for the record, too, that this, this ordinance did go for the Police Pension Board, and the Police Pension Board approved this ordinance coming to council as well, so they, and we did that last month. Given the other role, other hat that I have is the Police Pension Board Chair.
We can come back to this next week. I guess, I just following up on, on Councilwoman Circe's question. It, it's, it's sort of seems odd that what we're doing here in this ordinance is saying that we're changing the personnel chapter, right? But it reference after the effective date of this ordinance. It just, that, that language seems weird to go into a personnel chapter and in, that that's edited into. You know what I'm saying? Like, I think that's, I think that's what, that was, that was the fight I had too, that if, this is the ordinance, and it's one thing. that's what, that was, that was the fight I had too, that if this is the ordinance and it's one thing to say this goes into effect when the ordinance does, but it's, it's odd to use that language, I think, when we're she, you know, putting that, yeah, when we're putting that actually in the chapter on the personnel. So I guess that would, and we can come back to that when we vote on it for the first time, but that would just be my one question is, yeah. And the city attorney may be, I guess that is appropriate. But in the personnel chapter, it's like, well, what ordinance are you referring to? Because this is the language that goes into the personnel chapter.
Right.
And normally if you're going to refer to an ordinance, then you would refer to the ordinance number back. So that's why this language seems a little odd.
Okay.
But I think, yeah. So we can just check on that. I think the spirit of this. I'm not hearing necessarily any questions about that. We already did approve this program. It's just some of the language that we can loop around again on.
Okay.
Great. Any other substantive questions? Yeah. Councilmember Kovar? You're good. Okay. Thank you, Director Smith, for joining us this evening. And now we will move on to our next item, which is proposed community development block grants projects. I'll turn it back to the city manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This evening we have Director Cross, who is going to take us through the CDVG allocations and repurposing, Director Cross.
Good evening, everyone. Thanks for having me on. Am I able to share my screen? I think I should have to give you one second. I'm sorry.
You should be able to share on the share screen, green box.
Can folks see that?
Yes.
Alright, yes.
Okay. Hey, good evening, everyone. This is a discussion on the resolution to change of use of some of our CBG block, created on block grants, CBG funds. And I'm just going to go through a quick presentation. For background, Tacoma Park receives $91,000 annually in CDVG funding. City Council limited the use of CBG funds to capital projects in Resolution 201616. This number may change with the new census, but this is the number that we currently have. The way it works is that funds are allocated from HUD to Montgomery County, who then allocates the funds to Tacoma Park. We entered into, into a grant agreement with Montgomery County and the eligible uses are outlined in Montgomery County's annual action plan. So it's not just so easy that we, we can just change and use the funds however we want. It's actually put through an action plan and a public process. The use of any CDVG funds to support a city project must be done in either two ways. One, in an eligible area of the city or the project funds must be proven to be benefiting 51% of low to moderate income residents. And LMI residents are those percent of the AMI. These are the, this is the current CDVG eligible areas in the city in light blue. Just give you a quick second to see the map. So the use of CDVG funds, they trigger a lot of federal cross-cutting requirements for any, any project that's using CDVG funds. What we always hear from HUD is anytime $1 of CDVG funds go to a project, then all federal cross-cutting requirements must be met. For example, these are Davis Bacon Wage Law and actually going onsite interviewing workers to ensure that their wages are meeting, are beating the federal standards. The consequence of this is that projects of smaller value or smaller scopes that utilize maybe only a portion of our CDVG funds are sometimes difficult to procure, given these enhanced federal requirements, as well as contractors often add costs in their estimates because they may be unfamiliar with the requirements or they may not be meeting Davis Bacon Wage Laws with their current pay structure. What this leads us to is that City Council endorsed ADA Streetscapes as a use of the FY21 CDVG allocation. However, this project size and scope combined with the requirements has limited this project's liability and we have not been able to move forward with the ADA Streetscape use of CDVG. What we are looking for today is, in the resolution, is that the City Council approved the combination of the FY21 CDVG funds, change of use, combining with them with the FY22 and 23 funds, which are also $91,000 each, for a total of $273,000, which will be used for neighborhood improvement projects in Ward 5, particularly rehabilitation of Totally Frasier Park, which was last renovated in 2005. So it won't be, we think that utilizing the funds for this pro- these types of projects, particularly Totally Frasier, will be a larger scope and will be more easily procured and executed. So upon City Council approval of the resolution, city staff will work with Montgomery County DHCA to amend their annual action plan to allow the repurposing of the FY21 CDVG funds, as well as amending any grant remis or contracts we have with the county. For contact, you know, the HCD runs the CDVG funds, so myself or Ross Grigsby, the key development manager. And that's the end of my presentation and I'm available for any questions.
Short and sweet. I, Councilmember Smith.
I just want to say thank you, Mr. Cross, for the presentation. I think this will be a great improvement for the residents in Ward 5. Thank you for the rest of the city staff that helped bring this project to fruition. This is excellent. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Cersei?
Thank you so much for this presentation and all of the work that you all are doing. Do you suggest, based on some of the challenges with spending the CDVG funds based on a fiscal year, like the fiscal year allocations, do you all recommend that maybe we take an approach of combining multiple years of fiscal year dollars, CDVG dollars to do in the future, like larger scale projects, like what you all are proposing? I, I just, it was, it was surprising to kind of look at the map in terms of, you know, the areas of the city that are eligible for the CDVG funds. And then the cost of kind of doing something substantial with those dollars. So I just wonder if, if that might be an approach that the council, that what you're proposing now is an approach that the council may need to consider going forward and kind of planning, in essence, multiple years of CDVG funds for larger scale projects that may take a little longer to get done.
Certainly. I mean, either way can, can be accommodated. I think both, both processes have their merits. With a larger project, and just to be clear, you know, the eligible areas make it easier for us to do projects in those areas because it's assumed that the money being spent is benefiting 51% of low to moderate income folks. However, if we were to do a project in someplace else in the city, we'd have to prove that we're benefiting 51% of low to moderate income residents. But there's definitely two ways we can do it. We can look for larger projects and go out project by project, or we can get the annual allocation. I think this is kind of showing that maybe we have combined three years of, of funds and we look forward, we look to, you know, discuss more with the council.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? No, I'm not seeing anything. I think you covered it, Mr. Cross. Thank you very much for that. And I think this was our last item on the agenda. Does City Manager have anything else for us this evening? I'm not seeing anything else, so we will call this meeting adjourned. And it's a short one. Enjoy it because we start Monday, double duty next week. So hope to see everyone this weekend at the, was it, is it egg hunt? Is it Extravaganza? At the Extravaganza. Thank you, everyone. Good night.